We don't have a quorum yet. But we're going to start with information. We can start, we can go through Durin's report and we can go through Stephen's report, Frank's report, we can get there without the benefit of a quorum. And when we get one more board member, we can call it to order and go back to the top. So we are being recorded now, so are we on it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to note that we didn't have a quorum, but we'll start with some of the information parts of the meeting. And when we have a quorum, call it to order. If you want to start with the principals' report, please.
Sure. I'll be quick because I know we have presenters today. Hi, everybody. Some of the nuts and bolts of reporting on the school board goals, I wanted to just take a moment and show you what the syllabus template looks like. I don't know if you all got a chance to read their report, but at our three in-service days coming up next week, the teachers will include them entering this information. They'll meet by department or by field, we call it, like the unified arts. And they will be working with members, each group will have a facilitator with them. So it will be myself, someone from the IT department or the counseling department, to meet with each of the six or seven groups there are. So they'll see a form like this where they're asked to enter information about their course. And it really gets very detailed. And I, you had seen the-
Can you go a little bit, can you read some of those questions?
Okay, I can. I sent you a hard copy too. So everything from the subject area here to the current course title, like US history and American literature, which grade levels, course prerequisites, is it a required course for middle or high school graduation, how many credits is the course worth? And it goes on all the way down to, is it a college prep course, what are the readings in this course, does it have an honor strand? And then what are the grading methods, the grading scale, so the percentages per term, per quarter and final exam, the units of study, the summative assessments in the course, so tests, projects, labs, et cetera, expectations of student learning, this is for particular departments in science, social studies, PE, health, and family consumer science also.
So Durin, that list relates to the-
These have to do with our, their expectations for all students for the comprehensive program at our school. It was adopted maybe in 2005, and it's listed in the student handbook, but it's something else that we're, that we're doing at most, especially for NEAS.
Yeah, just to clarify, some of the board may be familiar seeing this around the building. It's in an oval and it's the 16 expectations for learning in those.
What's not listed among these is reading and writing, public speaking, and listening because that is done in every course.
So that's kind of like the GEs too, and the great expectations, is that where you're basing this from, or no?
Yes, that was the, Durin wasn't around when they were adopted, but that was the basis. It was a matter of trying to have an umbrella of standards that we could hold ourselves accountable to, that didn't get into all of the, keep you track of all the individual ones. And it remains to be seen whether eventually we'll get to that or not. It was a compromise at the time when the NEAS study, self-study was holding us to report in some way on those.
And actually, in the NEAS section of this principals' report, it does mention about our plan for how we are going to teach and assess these expectations in particular departments as listed up there. So I can get to that in a few minutes. And then we, our teachers learned a host of strategic and literacy instruction methods. And so, in addition to what writing genres are taught in the course and listing the assignments, and then specifically it says, you know, they all learn the combining sentences strategy, or you teach it, do you only assess it, or you don't teach it or assess it. So there's a, I don't know, probably a half dozen of these listed. And that brings us to the end. So upon completion of this, what we amass is a database that we can then search. Teachers, perhaps even board members, will have some version for the public. So if I'm a ninth grader and I'm going to take eight courses, they can be clicked on and you can see, well, what are your writing assignments for the year? What are the other summative assessments that you have? How many credit hours are you taking? Are you taking college preparatory courses? And we will, from this, be able to identify gaps in our curriculum. The ninth grade program, are we covering all the writing genres? Are we, are they only being expected to perform well in them, or is there actually instruction going on? Is that question says, I teach it and I assess it? If everyone says they only assess it and they don't teach it, is it being taught in the eighth grade? So there's, when I presented this today to the facilitators who will be doing this with the faculty next week, Matt Martin, who's the district IT director, he said, "This is going to be a fantastic database. You will amass so much information in a searchable format to ask questions that before couldn't have been asked. There'd be no way to find out the information." So I just had to show it to you in reality. So the next part of the principals' report, I think, is about the SAP grant, is that right?
Yep.
Which we got, hooray! Which means we can expand our substance abuse counseling and intervention services. And it's secure for three years. So of course, we have to report on the grant each year so they can check on us. If we don't fulfill what we set out to, then we won't get the renewal, but I have no concern about that. We have excellent personnel to carry this out.
I want to commend the board, Durin and Megan Allshuler for pursuing that grant and successfully making it work.
Yeah, yeah. And Lori Garland from Central Office helped tremendously as well. Did the whole budget, so if it happened without her, there's a-
So then this will be used to work with students that are having issues, it's not, or are you going to sort of present this topic for all the students about it? You know there's a difference, you know what I mean, what you're saying?
So the SAP provides comprehensive services and it's laid out in the grant proposal of everything from working with the seventh and eighth and ninth grade classes and health classes.
Okay.
She works on project graduation, so, and the grant expands it to some, to an elementary school component, so even further. So, yeah, all the above. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but typically, we have received state funding every year. And last year was sort of the skin of the teeth of the state to let us know, oh, yes, there will be funding available, just write a letter of intent, as we had to do previously. And then this year, we were informed, it was, that it is a competitive grant. And there's only a set amount of money, and they expected about 20 schools would be funded. And I found out today that 21 schools or school districts were funded, and they had over 40 applications.
Wow.
Good job.
Yeah. And I would have to say that because we had so much data on our school that we've been collecting over the last two years, it was a joy to write. It was just like paint by numbers, because you've got all the colors in front of you. Didn't have to do any new research. And because we have already such a strong program, we didn't have to talk about really what else we needed to do, because they want to support existing programs, plus the elementary part, I should say. So we added some more because that was an expectation of the grant. Okay. Spirit Days was a lot of fun. Too many assemblies in too short of a period of time, but it was really well received by the students. And it just so happens that right now, we are conducting the school climate survey. So it's sort of serendipity and little planning. And hopefully, I mean, students really want, I think they want to do it next year, and I believe all the teachers are on board, as they have been since we started working on this in March. So I-
Do you have any interest of the students coming on, you want to next year, yes, any questions here? We've done the rest of the reports.
Yeah, so I don't need to go into detail about the rest.
Thanks.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody answered questions. Since we actually have a quorum-
It's convenient.
Now we can call it to order, right? We skipped around on the agenda, so that we should get some informational stuff out of the way, and we have Paul Fadis's science class coming, who presents at 7:30, so we can probably sneak in, members of the public.
Yeah, also, you'd ask certainly, now that you have a quorum, ask about the consent agenda if anybody wants to introduce.
Okay. In the consent agenda for tonight, we have three policies that we looked at last month, that are warranted adoption tonight, as well as minutes. If anybody wants to pull anything over there, we can make that motion. When it's timed otherwise, that'll go through at the end.
Are we, are we adopted? They are, yeah.
They are, we just reviewed them.
We're reviewing them, and then I'll note that the original date of adoption is still pertains, but we'll also put the date of review so we know they're up to date in terms of your five-year, you know, cycle of looking at it, okay? Yeah, so you could, members of the public, they want to introduce themselves.
You two came afterwards. Do you have any additions or additions to the agenda you want to add?
No.
We did, we have a couple of members of the public. We talked to you earlier, there's nothing you actually want to address the board?
I'm just here-
You're just here to see the presentations?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. It's Tara, you have names? All right. We might, we probably use correspondence, and I have one, Bauman Madavi can't be here tonight, he sent an email to Emily discussing things that he's noticed pertaining to the music program here. He's, Emily forwarded the email to me, and basically, we decided that we would treat this email as correspondence to the board. I didn't make copies for everybody, but I'll certainly let you see it. We can make copies if you want. I would suggest that we probably withhold any real discussion on this, as Albauman can actually be here. He talks about, you know, sort of noticing a decline in the music program participation by the kids, you know, concerts being poorly attended. And, you know, doesn't really, you know, speculates as to the cause of it, but doesn't really know. And, you know, just briefly talking about how we wanted to handle this, he wasn't entirely sure there was anything that necessarily could be discussed regarding this. It was just sort of a, hey, you should know. But again, you know.
I think that he's raising it as it pertains to an item on our agenda for discussion regarding, it can relate somewhat to the science proposal, the required science courses. So, I mean, that's where I think that Emily and Joe advise the board, you know, to discuss to whatever extent you wish tonight, but certainly not make any decision until Bauman's here and have a full board. I'll make copies for you.
Okay. We got, we got through Durin's report. Do we need to go get Paul from the students, or are they just going to show up?
I'll come up.
Okay. We could probably go to that now. I'm visual recording, we have Durin presented on the thing, students coming in, Tom.
The new, the new format, huh?
Yeah, the new format.
Keep the TV cameras off. Good idea.
Do you see the screen and thing?
Okay.
Yep. Okay, let's see, what else we got? Oh, they're getting set up. I can entertain questions about supervision for it.
The, I just, I had one question, just curiosity more than anything else. What was the Melms Brownlee Scholar meeting?
I got all the kids.
I just didn't know what the contract rate was.
There it is, there it is. This is the banquet, it lists all the kids for the state and the speakers and the program I might pass around.
This is a recognition of students who-
What's best for us to present, we're going to put the PowerPoint up there. I thought maybe we would stand here. I have a dry erase board and a PowerPoint to hook up.
Leadership capacity, they're having a positive influence on their colleagues.
Stand here?
Yeah. So it's nominated by-
So you guys can sit.
Is it okay for them to sit over there? That'll be fine?
Yeah.
It's always, I always oblige a boy or a girl. And it's, so they get to attend this banquet. And they have a plaque, and you get a picture of Rip and Rin with the Commissioner of Education. You know, not a big deal, family ghost. Nice dinner.
It was just nothing I'd ever heard about.
Yeah, okay. Well, it, you know, we, sometimes at the middle school age, this kind of recognition doesn't help you socially, you know? But anyway, we want to recognize that, that students. The other thing, as I mentioned, the NAIC test coming up, and we've got the thing about the policy, I mentioned in the NEAS accreditation, we got a letter to that effect.
You want to position yourself, and then I'm going to position myself.
I'll report on that. I think you'll hear more about the Red Committee later on. And we won't have to go into executive session regarding negotiations because we don't have anything to consider yet. There hasn't been any change, I think, since the last time. Doing that. And let's see, there was one other bit of information I can share with the board. People are concerned about assessment. The NECA test window next fall will be from October 1st to the 23rd. That will be once again in math and language arts. We just concluded the science only two weeks ago, or a week ago. Yeah.
No, I appreciate the early notice.
Let's see. Oh, yeah, one other bit of information. I sent an email out to all board members of the WCSU regarding the proposal to start the Leland and Gray Day late. I don't know if you have any questions about that. From my point of view, I would have liked to have had it happen starting this fall, but it isn't going to happen because we don't have sufficient resources in the budget. And that will involve the budget process in the fall. I do have a letter from the bus contractor regarding estimates for that. And Frank and I had hoped that perhaps we could work it out within our budgetary constraints, but that proved to be a stretch too far. So we kept the bus schedules that we negotiated, and we think we'd get everything to work once we get the money to do it. And this ballpark figures is about $30,000. When I spread $30,000 across 300 and something students here at the Leland and Gray, about less than $100 a student, and anything we can do to improve student achievement and academic performance, you know, at $100 a head is certainly worth trying. And research indicates that starting later will help.
What's the real reason for the call?
There are two. The morning worked out pretty well, and in fact, the bus system worked quite well. But specifically, the West Wardsboro run, in the afternoon, we have to have a dead run and run twice because the high school kids have to get home, and then the elementary kids. They couldn't work that on the same bus. In the morning, they can pull them all together, but anyway. So Jamaica, Wardsboro, South Dufane, they all had extra runs. And then the Career Center PM had an estimate too, being different than, you know, what we've had. So, you know, we, I think, I think it's, if we're persistent, or at least if I'm persistent, I hope that we eventually get there. But I appreciate the discussion that will ensue in the fall among all the boards. We share that cost. Thank you. All right, we have a presentation now from the AP Biology class, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Either way, first of all, thank you all for coming. I know that your time is precious here in the meetings, and it's a great pleasure to actually come and to share what we've done, and in a closer detail than what you may have heard about through others, and to actually give them an opportunity to talk about it as well. This is the first year that we did AP Biology. I'm very proud of this group. We're missing two people, Olivia Capincelli and Nicole Sherman, but this is a very hardworking group. And two of them were also challenged by the language. Carla's from Spain, Hong's from China. So in addition to learning the depth of biology, they also had to translate it along the way, and they really did a commendable job. So I'd just like a little round of applause for them. So what we did in this experiment, which I'm eager to share with you, is called the DNA transformation. And probably not a day goes by without some news article that has some mention of DNA that's being used in some way. And so this is the agenda that we're going to try to stick with here. We had the introduction, why by Mike, how by Wade, and then the results of our experiment by Drew. We're only going to have this introduction just three minutes. Carla has prepared a PowerPoint to give a little bit more detail of that. And then Hong has some more detail about what the DNA is and what we used in the experiment. And then we have some photographs. Hong is also going to talk about sterile technique, about what is needed to use in working with E. coli. And we'll open it up to questions. So the hope is to get all of this done in about 15 minutes, okay? But we may have some more questions. We also have some props here for you to look at as well. All right? So, Mike?
So as Mr. Fadis said, bio modification genetics has become more like applicable to us now as we keep learning more and more about what we can do to genes. Examples are like vegetables and foods. We're making them more and more favorable to the characteristics we'd like in our farms, so we're getting more of the yields that we'd like. So this is, you know, helping our, you know, we're keeping an increase of like jobs and everything like that. We're also learning like more and more about the field, so the job industry is going higher. So we're going to get more opportunities if we keep studying things like this. So like, this field first started in near the 1960s, when doctors were learning how we could use insulin to help treat diabetics. And this is the same techniques where they'd modify the insulin so that could go into the body and work with the cells to make the diabetics, you know, their blood sugar levels more averaged out. So this is just a little thing where we took our DNA and we changed it to make the bacteria, which was E. coli in this case, it was a, we made it so it would be resistant to the ampicillin, which we put in our agar plates, which would, you know, if we got the DNA to modify, that 'd make it easier, or it did show that it accepted what we were making it modify, and it proved that the genes were transformed.
Well, we did this. My first, we had to grow a bunch of colonies of E. coli so we could transform them. After we grew them in the incubator, we took them out, and we had to make them competent, which means that we had to make them acceptable to taking in to the plasma. To make them competent, we had to ice them, and then we heat shock them in 42 degrees Celsius water for 90 seconds. So it would open up, and it'd take the plasma in, and then you'd ice the E. coli again, so then it would kind of like lock it in. And then after that, we put them on four new agar plates. The agar plates, two were with ampicillin and two were without ampicillin. And we put on each ampicillin, we had one with the transformed E. coli and one without the transformed E. coli. And then that, we did the same for the two without it.
All right. So the results we got were the ones that we wanted, and the E. coli that had the pea green grew and replaced with the ampicillin. And then the E. coli that did not have the pea green, the necro. So it showed that we transformed the E. coli to be able to live and play with ampicillin. That was the reasons.
Okay, what we want to do now is, you might have, does anyone have any quick questions before we go on? But what's what, and they just said, oh-
What was the source of the E. coli?
The source of the E. coli was Carolina Biological Supply. We sent away for that. We didn't actually-
You didn't grow your own?
We didn't grow our own, no. Although, the reason for using that is that E. coli is one of the most prevalent forms of bacteria. It is a natural bacteria growing in our small intestine. And there are different strains that can be fatal, but this is still, it can be a dangerous bacteria. So all of the techniques that we used had to be sterile technique, hands with gloves and so forth. We're sterilizing all the equipment along the way. And so we received this from Carolina Biological Supply.
And we also used E. coli because it's a lot faster growing, so it's an easier process for us in our biology classroom, where a lot of other ones have taken a lot more time. So this is an easier method of growing in our incubator, so it made a good option.
How long was the time, Mike?
What's that?
How long?
We could actually grow it within two days. So we put it in, put it in with our inoculating nup, which is how we transfer it, put it in the incubator, come back a couple days later, and you have a huge lawn of bacteria that we can test and take out and make new samples out of that. So it's a lot faster process than some of the other bacterias we had before.
Now you may, while we're on E. coli, you may hear reports during the summer, generally the West River, you may hear, and Townsend Dam has a very high E. coli count now, which isn't in itself necessarily bad. It could be bad. But what is done as far as water quality testing, E. coli is associated with other bacteria that can be dangerous. So a high E. coli count, to be prudent, it's good to stay out of the water with a high E. coli count. But E. coli is also found in raccoons and anything that is any wild animal, it's also in their intestines as well. So, okay, so Carla has a PowerPoint, and Hong is going to talk a little bit about plasmids and a little bit of an introduction. Hong, you want to come here so that people can hear you, all right?
So I will give you a little bit background about this lab, so it will help you to understand it better. So the transfer of new DNA into organisms have had a lot of influence in our everyday lives, such like we can use human DNA for gene for insulin, and human growth hormone into some bacterias. So this kind of bacteria can help people to produce as much insulin and human growth hormone as we need. And, but how is, but how is new DNA introduced into an organism? The technique of gene transfer in higher plants and animals are pretty, pretty hard, pretty difficult. It's also very costly. So we choose to use E. coli bacteria. It is much easier and much simpler for teaching laboratory. And it is also rare, rare for most bacteria to take up DNA naturally from the environment. But by subjecting bacteria to certain artificial conditions, we can enable many of them to take up DNA. When cells are in a state in which they are able to take up DNA, they are referred to as, referred to as competent. Making cells competent usually involves changing the ion, ion experience of the medium and heating the cells in the presence of positive ions. heating the cells in the presence of positive ions. Usually we use calcium. The treatment of, this treatment renders the cell membrane permeable to DNA. Now I will introduce you what is a plasmid. A plasmid is a small circular piece of double stranded DNA that has an origin of replication. The ar, an origin of replication is a sequence of bases at which DNA replication begins. Because they can, because they contain origins of replication, plasmids are copied by the host cell's DNA replication enzymes. And each daughter cell receives copies of plasmid upon cell division. Therefore, plasmids do not need to be refined into genome to be maintained and expressed. Additionally, since plasmids do not have to have DNA that is similar to the host cell's DNA, DNA from other organisms can be maintained as a plasmid. And now, Carla, please, um, give us more details about, about this lab and it will go through the PowerPoint.
So I'm going to do a little introduction about the DNA. Most of you already know what it is, but, but, um, is the, well, they want, the DNA contain all the genetic instructions that compounds how we are and how we look like and everything. The DNA segments carrying the genetic information are called genes. The genes are finding the chromosomes. The DNA transformation is, the plasmid used to transform the DNA contains a gene for resistance to an antibiotic. Then after the transformation, the bacteria that adhere the plasmid can be distinguished from those that did not be plating the bacteria on agar containing the antibiotic. Our goal during this project and this lab was to transform the DNA of E. coli and give them the ability of being resistant to antibiotic, antibiotic ampicillin. And I don't know if you know, but the plasmid called pea green is the subtle marker has a better Latin message, Latin race. And the color marker is, um, is the mutant GFP ampicillin resistant. The phenotype of transformation is the fusion gene, yellow-green colonies. What we are going to get in the end is color green and yellow that is going to show us that the colony grew correctly. This is a piece of plasmid, that's how the plasmid look like. The plasmids are segments of DNA that are finding bacterias. And all around that is different genes that will end in different characters and all of them have different functions. So the essential factors, factors for our E. coli, that's what we required to do and that's what we did. Of course, they need like proper nutrients, so we played our nutrients in agar. They need a proper environment and we prepared them in an incubator, 37 degrees Celsius, that is around 98 degrees Fahrenheit. It's like the perfect temperatures for them, like reproduce easily and really fast. The time period, like Michael said, is around two or three days. It's pretty fast and it's what provide us the opportunity of work with, like we see it in the school. The lack of inhibiting factors, we practiced sterile technique. The sterile technique in each step is really important because allow us to, not have different bacterias we don't want applying there. So to make it easy to understand, the person here is like a picture of the pea green. It's really similar to the other one, but here we can see the part of the ampicillin and the GFP. What's the color marker gene, the mutant GFP fusion gene and where it comes from? The GFP gene has an aquatic origin. Stands for, GFP stands for green. It's because in the end we obtain a green, yellow's color. It's a fluorescent protein and comes from a jellyfish called Acurea victoria. These jellyfish emit a green glow from the edges of their bell-like structures and this glow is easily seen in coastal waters inhabited by jellyfish. We have been trying to study why would they use this kind of like gene for, like to be green? And we realized that maybe it'd be a really weak animal, they need some kind of protection for be, for the predators. So maybe they use this as a sign of danger. Why we want to use the GPF gene, the pea green plasmid contains the GFP and a gene for a precision resistance. It has a mutant version of GFP that turns bacteria yellow-green. Even in normal light, you can see it, but if you expose the colonies into like ultraviolet light, they also fluoresce. Our results, as like Drew said before, were pretty good. A really accurate, the E. coli that we transformed was resistant to ampicillin and glow at green under the ultraviolet light, like we wanted. And the bacteria that we didn't transform did not glow in the ampicillin plate. That's it.
Okay. So. Are there questions that we can answer? After all that, you made a little overview of what we actually did. Is it clear what we did? Anyone have any questions? Bruce?
This, this is like really timely because legislature in Vermont has been talking about genetically modified organisms and whether or not they should be labeled.
Right.
In packaging. Did this work give you any better ideas on the pros and cons of requiring labeling or working with genetically modified organisms or letting us eat it?
Well, Mr. Tolskas, we have, he sets up something called Model State Legislators, where we actually do a mock version of that. And one of the bills was actually that exact topic. And so we had a discussion about it for about a half hour. And some people thought it wasn't like a big deal whether it was labeled or not. Some people thought that the process of labeling would be more of a hassle than necessary, but a lot of people just thought that labeling would be a good idea because in general, like genetically modifying an organism isn't necessarily bad for it, but it is unnatural and some people are against that. So that was pretty much what we learned in this, is like, you know, it's, in some ways it's helpful in like making foods bigger or making foods more favorable, but it's also not the natural process, which a lot of people don't agree with. So that's what we realized, saw from this, is that it can have positives and negatives.
I think that it's going to also be useful for like the economy of farmers and people that works with animals, with vegetables and stuff that had been attacked with insects, what kind of insects that if we made them resistant to, or more stronger, like he said, different size, the economy would like get better. So this can help to some people and of course be bad for others. So like always, it's like a really controversial topic, but I don't know. I don't know if we agree or not. You can explain what you're doing.
Well, I think you and Mike said it both, that there are benefits and there are potential risks involved in it. And I think what is important is that people are given a right to choose so that they can make their own decisions. I think that that's, I, that's my opinion on that. Other questions? Yes?
Well, just a comment. It seems to me too that you need to include in this discussion the impact on wild, on wild ecosystems, like for example genetically modified corn, the pollen from that lands on the milkweed, which actually kills the monarch caterpillar. So that's a whole, another aspect to the discussion that needs to be.
To contain those, those genes that you release in the environment.
Yeah.
Would be impossible. And I think that, that is, is another risk as well. And the same, I think they're seeing some, some effects from that in farm-raised fish and salmon, some of the genes that they add to increase the size or improve the color of getting into the wild strains and possibly having some negative consequences. So that is another consideration. So very timely from a state standpoint and from a global standpoint as far as manipulation of DNA. Other questions on what we did? It's pretty incredible, I think, to do this, to actually take the DNA of the E. coli. What we did to ensure that there was this change, we grew the E. coli that we had on a plate with ampicillin. And the E. coli that did not go through the process that we did, did not grow on this plate. And yet, the bacteria that we did transform, okay, was resistant to the ampicillin and did grow on this plate. Agar is a substance that's used in the pichi dips. And as everybody said, the, the green marker is another way to help identify the E. coli that is there. And that, as you may know, is also, markers are being used quite a lot in medicine to detect different types of cells, particularly cancer cells. It's being used in introductory stages to detect the location of cancer cells. And as Mike said in the beginning, the production of insulin is done by the same process, by taking the gene that produces insulin, adding it to a back, to a plasmid, putting that plasmid into a bacteria. Those bacteria then reproduce and produce the insulin. And before we did this lab, they did a paper lab to kind of illustrate that process where they took out insulin from a human gene, put it in a plasmid, and then we simulate putting this into the bacteria that produces the insulin. So, other questions? Steven?
I don't want to go into this debate here, but I did want to challenge the students to think about this. We're here in the woods of Vermont and we got turkeys. And when Thanksgiving comes around, I've been to a turkey farm that produces turkeys. And it's a different bird entirely. And I suppose it got there by breeding. And it certainly has a significantly different DNA to develop those breasts and the meat that we like to eat, as you pointed out, Mike, right? So anyway, I just wanted to give the perspective of, one of the interesting things about the experiment is in two days you were able to accomplish something very similar to the interbreeding or the breeding or the pollination of plants and flowers that we, we've used over time, going back to Mendel before. So anyway, just leave that, it's, I think that really is an aspect of the debate, which has a historic relevance and doesn't make it any clearer, but there certainly is a similarity and a difference between those two processes to get the kind of production of animal and vegetable that we seek to survive as a plant.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks for your time. And if you have any questions, you can send me an email or ask them again. So thanks for your time.
Please help Mr. Feta to keep providing the opportunity of give the students this, because for example, this for me changed. Now I want to focus in genetic, because this opened my doors for like genetic world. And we actually did a genetic engineering experiment. Yeah, it's not like we're going to change in life, but we are doing something that is all the days, all the people changing, like I'm saving lives. So yeah, keep please helping him to.
Also, if you guys would like to see an illustrated process of what we did, Olivia and Nicole, who aren't here right now, but they made a really great board right in front of our room with the process all laid out and explained on the bulletin board right out behind this wall. So on your way out, you can check that out.
Thank you. Again. Thanks.
You're just going to bounce all over the agenda. Might as well keep going with Tom and put on, put you off a little bit longer.
Sure. Yeah.
Much more important.
My pleasure.
Journey East.
Good.
Journey East tops financial reports every, any night time.
It does need financial support, right?
Ah, we're good.
What I'd like to do is pass out, just to try to give you a sense, 15 minutes, I can't do this in 15 minutes. I will do something in 15 minutes. I could honestly, I could go on for hours. And, oops, wrong one. And those of you who know me, would you pass, pass those around? Know that that is true.
Yep.
Just one of your many fine attributes, Tom.
One of my favorite amounts. So I pass the itinerary around just to give you some sense, some of you have a sense. Deon has been, for China, is one of the chaperones in our program, as was Bauman last year. And some of you have had students, I know Frank had a daughter and Mike, Mike Dolan has had three kids, who've been involved in the program. Kids get asked, they come back from China and they get asked, and I'm sure you were asked, you know, so what was it like? And they can't really describe it. They can't. We got back over a month ago and our kids still can't describe it. But there, I asked the students when they came back to write a reflection. I gave them a half an hour or so to write a reflection, each student, the experience. This was probably, probably two weeks after we got back and they'd come down to Earth. And those reflections are going to be in the June newsletter. There's about seven pages worth of what this, what our students had to say. And I think that those reflections, I really encourage you to read them. I think they will give you a sense, a real sense of the impact of this program on the students who are involved. I, quite honestly, I, I had, I had those in front of me and I tried making a presentation to the faculty. And I found them so moving that I had, I had to have a couple of students come in and read the reflections. I couldn't, I couldn't read them. So at any rate, let me get started. Some good news, some really good news. Out of the blue, two days ago, I got a check from Mount Snow for $500 for a donation to the Journey East program. And it was out of the blue. I had, I had no idea we were, I had no idea it was coming. So that was, that was really nice and we really appreciate that donation by Mount Snow. A year and a half ago, after we, after the Freeman Foundation funding ended, you know, I'm scratching my head, semi panicked, trying to figure out how are we going to keep this program going? And it occurred to me that one way of doing it would be to be approved by the State Department and by Homeland Security to accept foreign tuition paying students, whose tuition we could then use to help fund the Journey East program. So in October of, two years ago now, we applied to SEVIS for, for approval to accept foreign tuition paying students. We were finally approved, maybe three months ago, two and a half months ago. And the good news is, we currently, we have accepted three Chinese students for the full year, coming in probably towards the end of August, who will be attending Leighton and Gray. They will pay full tuition at Leighton and Gray. And they will also, there will also be a $600 stipend per month for host families. Joe Winrig here is going to be one of the hosts. Daniel Riley up in Wyndham is going to be another, for two boys from Shanghai. And Bauman has agreed to host a boy from Fu Zhou, from the city that Ms. Chen is from. So my thought is that within the next, if we can bring in another three students, not necessarily this year, but between this year and next year, we will. necessarily this year, but between this year and next year, we will have generated about $78,000 to $80,000 in tuition income. And my thought was, what we will do is take the Chinese money and send our students back to China with Chinese money, which I thought was kind of cool. And it was touch and go there for a while, and I wasn't sure if it was going to fly or not, but I was greatly relieved Monday, Tuesday, when I got word from our contact in Shanghai that the two boys who had applied for visas, got their visas, and the boy from Fujian is going on the 29th, and hopefully he will as well. So that was, that's pretty awesome. I think, I think it's a way of sustaining the program. So we won't have to be, we won't have to be, excuse me, dependent on money coming in from this organization or that organization. I spent a lot of time when we were in China, talking with principals of schools. I've sent information to principals of schools in Inner Mongolia and elsewhere, so they're all over it. There are lots of Chinese who would like to send their kids to school in the United States because they want them to go to an American university. Other news, we have 64 Chinese coming here this summer as part of two programs. There's a two-week program from July 6th to July 18th with 33 people coming in from Chongqing. They're middle school, they're early middle school kids. Joe is hosting two boys who are part of that program as well. And then four days later, we have students coming in from two sister schools that Durin worked with when Durin was in China this past spring. And our hope is that we may end up being able to do some recruiting from students from those two schools. We'll, we'll see. And we're, by the way, we're looking for, I have 30 hosts lined up so far. I need hosts for, I need two hosts for males, two boys in each family for the second program. And I need one more host family for two girls, which will bring us up to, what, 32 or 33 host families, which I think is pretty amazing. There is a stipend involved for those, for families that host, the stipend being $100 per week per child, per student, for hosting. So if anybody here is interested, we'd be happy to talk to you about it. The Mongolians are coming in the fall. I know everybody looks forward to that. All, all the kids in the Journey East program want to host Mongolians. And in fact, some of them are getting emails from dance partners, people that they collaborated with. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And they're just wild about this. I don't know if Janina did, but they're all over it. So we have students standing in line to host members of the delegation that'll come in from Inner Mongolia. I don't know whether you, I don't know whether you followed it or not, the website that Bauman did for the program is phenomenal. If you haven't seen it, and you want to get a, you really want to get more of a sense of the program, just go to, go to Leland and Gray, go to Journey East and take a look at the website. Bauman, I sent, I think he said I sent him 1,200 or 1,300 photos while we were there. And each, there's an essay written by the students during each day that we were there. And one, one last thing, and before we talk a little bit about this itinerary, I talked about the, I talked about the newsletter. I keep running into people who, parents of kids who graduated, who were part of our program back in 2000 or 2002. I was at a place up in Walpole the other night, and there was a woman sitting there who I recognized, and her daughter Geneva Holden was part of our program back in 2000. And Geneva went from here to McGill, and then she majored in East Asian Studies in Chinese. And then she went to work in China for a Chinese corporation for two years, and gutted it out, and really improved her Chinese. And then she just finished at UC Irvine with an MBA. And according to her mother, she's now back in Shanghai, and she's working in a Chinese company, but they're importing American goods. Our students have gone to, we've had many students who've been in our program who have gone to China after they've been in our program to do a semester, or not a semester, a full year, at School Year Abroad's program in Beijing. Students have gone on to India, Ethiopia, name it. Once they've done the program, they are, they're ready for anything, and they, they are citizens of the world. So I'm, it's pretty, it's pretty exciting as a, as a teacher to realize that there are kids who had, were now 28, 29, or even 30 years of age, who are out there doing it. Frank's daughter is an example of that. Studied Chinese at the university, spent how much time in Taiwan?
Uh, it was a semester.
Spent a semester in Taiwan. We've got kids teaching in China now. And so, the program is, you know, quite honestly, it's, it's pretty amazing. So, the itinerary, what I'd like to do is show you guys some, some photos. I'll just run through them to give you some sense. The itinerary is unbelievably full. Beijing should be the first page, it's not on here. We visited, after a 14-hour flight over, we visited the Great Wall the first day we were in China. And then on our way back, we went to Tiananmen Square. Kids are now pretty familiar with Tiananmen Square and the events of June 3, 4, 1989 in Beijing. The Temple of Heaven, the Forbidden City, which was the, where the palace where the emperors lived for, during the Qing, Ming dynasties, or even before the Qing dynasty for hundreds of years. And then we get into this. You'll notice there's a tremendous number of schools that we visited. The Student's Day in a variety of cities. Chongqing is a municipality of 33 million people. 33 million. You can drive for hours and hours and hours from the center of town, and you're still, it's factory after factory after factory, right in the middle of villages. It's totally awesome. If you're a Vermonter, you should hate it, because it's polluted, and somehow or other, our kids love it. They love Chongqing. It's green, it's tropical, and it's pretty awesome. Coming from Vermont, I guess in March, in landing, or getting into Chongqing is probably the worst. Activities, so there's lots of activities there. Again, visit, any school that we visited, students were swarmed by other students, interacted with them, performed for them, performed with them. Chufu is a nine-day stop, we stay at the campus of a university. Many performances at middle schools and at universities. And the last two pages are on our activities in Inner Mongolia, which is always the students' favorite. Although they love Chongqing, Inner Mongolia is really where it's at. And interestingly, huh?
Well, there's friends there.
There's friends.
You connect.
Interestingly enough, these Mongolian kids speak very, very little English, and it doesn't make one whit of difference. The collaboration and the friendships that develop on a very deep level in a very short time are fairly awesome. We're there for nine days, and our students are collaborating, dancing, singing with students who are preparing for professional careers in, in those fields. So why don't I just, I'll run through some slides, if you don't mind. Give me a time, and I'll rack it up in that time. Did I already do it? Almost?
We'll cut everything else short.
Give me, give me seven or eight minutes, and I'll just whip through it, okay? These are, this is the smallest school we visited, a school for children of migrant laborers. Here we go. Every place we went, warmly welcomed the Education Delegation from Vermont, USA. This is the, this is that migrant school. This is the first school we visited outside of Chongqing. There were, I think, 700 to 1,000 students. It's an elementary school. Kids are in and out. There's 100 million migrant laborers in China. 100 million people on the move, and they, you know, they're here and gone, so it's a real problem. But we're doing exercises with them. Our kids are not used to doing anything in order, or following many rules. So this was a very interesting, but they had a blast. They performed for us. These are some of the younger kids in that school. This was, this was our first performance, it was an outdoor performance. We have no idea, when you go someplace, what you're going to be getting into. This is, yeah? Pretty common. Is there a place where we could get a light, for a second? We've visited a lot of classes. Visited, yeah. Our kids, if you could turn one of these on. Our kids participated in classes, most of, this is actually a pretty small class, most of them had 48 to 60 kids. I don't remember the school. Oh, Buddhist lummisary in Inner Mongolia. We visited these 900-year-old Buddhist carvings in a place called Tadzu. These are huge. That is the head of a Buddha, reclining Buddha that's probably 200 feet long. One of their favorite parts of the whole thing is the desert. And in the reflections that the kids have written, you'll read about it, they just realized how small, and it made them feel fairly insignificant. I tell them when we go out there that I'm going to take them to church, and I make them go out by themselves somewhere and just sit down away from other people and reflect. And you've got a sense of it here. They love it. Some of the come back, some of them come back pretty shaken, because it's the first time they've been alone, really alone, and had a chance to really think about where they're at, what they've been up to. The audiences, they call this guy the turtle. Interesting. This is a school, it's run by American, people from Los Angeles. It's a private school, it's a private college. But the kid, the audiences absolutely ate up what our kids were doing. Great Wall, it's interesting, when you get to China, first day you're there, everybody's on the wall, and they're all going wild because it's the Great Wall. And if you were to ask them now, what was the most significant part, the Great Wall wouldn't even enter into the conversation. It is pretty impressive, I gotta say. We ate a lot of food, they liked the way, this is Addie, Bauman's daughter, they liked it. We all sat around round, round tables with a big lazy Susan, and we'd sit at dinner for an hour, and there'd be a lot of conversation, and it was a lot of fun. And the social piece was really, she didn't want her picture taken. We danced with beautiful girls, or some of us did. Eric Ginter, this was Eric's dance partner in Inner Mongolia. She lives about 1,800 miles away from Puhua, she's way out in Xinjiang. Our kids danced to, here's a Mongolian teaching, Chris Lash, Eric Scott, and Eric Johansson, this dance that they did together in the dance studio. These guys were, they worked really, really hard at this. I shut this out the hotel window, and you can't really see it very well. These are all solar hot water collectors. They're so far ahead of us in some ways. That was shot out my hotel window. Buildings are either, things are either going up or coming down. Never seen anything like it. This was, this was at a college. Steven, I think, I don't know if you were there or not, welcome, American students actor from Vermont to Jingling University. It's a university of 15,000 students. And we performed at Jingling. Our students bought clothing after, at last day in Inner Mongolia. This is a welcome, we, I always take the students, in fact, your wife went to this, this Mongolian kindergarten with me. It's, it's a Montessori school. It is totally awesome. I've never taken an elementary teacher to this school who didn't want to stay and teach.
That's the only other animals, so.
Yeah. These kids all performed for us at this Mongolian kindergarten here. You've got some little Mongols in training. And they truly were enjoying what we were doing. They're using cheekbones in, as manipulative.
Yeah, they're doing math there.
They're doing mathematics. Instruction in this school is in Mongolian. That's artificial turf, by the way, that Alana is on with these. Oh, right out in the playground, blew me away. They are peeing. All the boys, it was.
This artificial turf, there's not enough water.
They had all these five-year-old kids, and they didn't want to send them inside, so they, Mount Tai, one of the sacred mountains in China. This is Ellie Gunther Moore, Susan's daughter. This is a big poster that's, she was with us in 2005, '07. This is a poster that's still hanging in one of the music class with a music professor. Downtown Chufu. Still a fair amount of poverty, a lot of traffic in the cities, a lot of traffic in the cities. I think the next shot, yeah. This is the sign of the times in China, okay? As is that. So you get both. Though I shot these out the window, one right after the other. These guys are, they call them Bang Bang Men. They're displaced, people, peasants who are displaced by the Three Gorges Dam. And they're looking for work, and they carry bamboo poles like this guy is doing. And that's, that's what they do. They schlep stuff around, they carry stuff, that is how they make a living. This guy, first time I met him, blew my way, he's from Sri Lanka. And he's doing business in Chongqing, making, what was it, Steven?
Roji Chanai.
Ah, that was great. Uighurs, those are, that would be Lam, so these are Muslims from Western China. The Yom Sia. At night, from where we took a cruise. New building going up in front of us, traffic jams below our, pandas, oh my God, the kids loved the pandas, who went to Panda Reserve.
Was it Xi'an there, or was it?
That was in Chengdu. This is a baby that's trying to get out of this tree. And then we, so Chongqing is pretty green. Then we go to Shandong province, and this is out of the bus window in the way to the hotel from the airport, dry. This is the university. We spent nine days on this campus. It's great. We have a really great relationship with these people, and have had for, I think, 12 years now. The kids like it here a lot. This was a class we had at night on the lobby of our quarters in Chufu. Oh, this was interesting. There were 6,000 kids on the playground. 6,000. Two schools, the upper middle school and the lower middle school, they were all on the playground. They were getting there. If you look in the background, that background is about 100 yards away, and this is a soccer field, one end to the other, like this, full. And the, and the lower middle school in the background, full. English class, our kids played sports. Livy, dance, dance. This guy went, came here back in 2000, it was a guy named Budala. He choreographed the Inner Mongolian performance at the Shanghai Expo, basically World Square, and he was the choreographer for their show. These are our kids in the background.
He was here when?
He's been here twice. He was here two or three years ago. He first came, he was 16. So he's like 27 or 28. I think he might be Brendan's age now. This is a fashion show, went up to elementary school. Unbelievable, they had a stage that would put, it's like buttered with flint, Burlington, right? And here come, here's, these are all elementary school Mongolian girls in Mongolian costume for us. These are kids just laughing. These are kids just laughing at what we were doing. I was taking pictures of the audience watching our performance. I have no idea what this is, although we do have a communist gathering there on the left. But this is at the Temple of Heaven, which is there. Handicap accessible. Temple of Heaven. This is Beijing. This is a, this is a pretty typical sky in Beijing.
Is that fog or snow?
It's not fog. It's tough. Heart, heart, full of people exercising. Oh. Just wrong. Beautiful, beautiful flowers. And that is the end of it. So I have honestly, I'd love to, and I could go on, I'm not going to, but obviously you don't have time. Do you have any questions? I'd, I'd love to answer.
I just wanted to share that haze in Beijing is a very... Anyway, on one trip I was there two different times and I didn't, uh, I didn't realize that it was such a beautiful city. But if, if you get a clear day, you can actually see the mountains around it. It's, it's a little bit like the LA. It's a lot, it has some of that inversion pollution problem that Los Angeles has because it is, there is a mountain range.
And they are planting millions and millions of trees to try to deal with their pollution problems. And I mean millions.
Yeah, along every road.
Work groups, work groups from different, from different factories, schools have, they have a responsibility to go out and plant trees. So they have an area that they need to plant. It's all volunteer, of course, but...questions? Yeah?
Have you guys seen any, have you seen any changes, Tom, now that you've been out, like in the schools or things that they're doing differently that, from one time to another, that is obviously different?
Going differently in the schools?
In the schools or just, you know, I don't know how they're, how they're teaching the kids or, or things they are picking up that are different, you know, five years ago to now or anything like that over there, changes?
Um, you see an incredible use of technology now, much more use of technology in the schools than I was used to seeing a few years ago. In terms of methods, it's difficult, it's hard to say. In the, in the lower, in the elementary schools, I see it. They're so driven by success on the Gaokao test. They take these tests, which everybody dreads, that they, if the students don't pass that test, they don't get into university. So a lot of Chinese are really hedging their bets. That's part of what's going on with us. There are not enough universities for all the students who want to go to university. Okay, so there's, so parents are looking for options of sending them to the States or sending them to Australia or New Zealand or one of the Western European countries. I think they would like to change. I know they would like to change. And I, I just want to say, I want to say one other thing and then maybe you have another question. One thing we heard from the, from Chinese teachers and from, and from kids, no matter where we were, they loved what our kids were doing. They loved their creativity. They loved their diversity. They loved their spontaneity. And they loved the fact that our kids could, that they could do lots of different things. They didn't just sing. They didn't just act. They could play an instrument. They, they were all over that. And that was mentioned at every school we went to. So they admire, they admire us for that. And they would like more of that. And we would like a little more of theirs.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions?
I could respond to that. In terms of the ten years, well, thirteen years' investment, listening to groups and having a comment, I try to avail myself of questions. The questions are much more open and sophisticated. Less, less reserved than they were ten years ago. I mean, these, these groups that are visiting, some of the teachers are returning, you know, they're willing to, and the students are willing to answer questions that are a little more open-ended and a little, take a little more risk, a little more courage to ask. And I think that really is a matter of confidence in the relationship. And that, that, that's, that's what I've, that's about the only thing I've noticed in terms of visitors coming, coming here.
In terms of changes in the country, it's not the same place that I went to in nineteen ninety-seven. In fact, the place that I just went to two months ago is not the place that I was at in two thousand and ten, but it's that fast. It is absolutely that fast. Just to illustrate it and then I'll, then I'll be done. Stephen, give me the Eli here. Not really. The school, the school that we, that we spend a lot of time at in Inner Mongolia. When I started going there in nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, had a two-lane road in front of it. There were, first of all, there were little shanty-type things and then there was a two-lane highway with donkey carts and a lot of bicycles. That road is now ten lanes wide with a bicycle lane in addition on each side. And there's traffic jams. That's in, no time at all. I just, it's, it's mind-blowing. And they told me that four hundred, four hundred, there's four hundred new cars on the roads in Ouhad every day. It's a small city. It's got three or four million people. Four hundred new cars a day, every single day. I don't know what...
And Ouhad is a lot like Los Angeles too in that it's flat and the mountains.
Well, the implications for energy consumption, gasoline, competition for this kind of thing.
Yeah, and you're still kind of crude, like with the coal, like they just burn coal, you know?
That's what they got.
Massive amounts of coal.
Well, like no filters and scrubbers.
Nina's a, Nina's a parent. You've had two of your kids go. You got anything you want to add? I, I can't even begin to hit it, you know?
I just want to say that it's, it's an amazing program and it's great that it's, you know, up here in the corner of Little Vermont, that this program exists and gives the opportunity to many kids. I just, I don't understand why kids, all kinds of kids aren't just lined up to say, I want to go and I want to...
They are now.
Yeah.
No, they are, really. This, something has happened. I think it was the dynamic of our group. I think it was the composition of our group. I've had kids coming up to me in the last month saying, you know, Tom, what do I have to do to go to China? Who I would never in a hundred years have expected to be interested. And I think, I think a lot of that had to do with the, the composition of this particular group. Because there were kids in this group who were not part of the group that you might have considered to be prime candidates for. So that was, and I'm pretty happy about that. That was a deliberate, that was a calculated move.
I think it's such an eye-opener for the kids. It's, I've heard, I've heard, you know, following the, my kids' friends, they will, I'm gonna stay here in Vermont and I'm gonna play guitar and I'm not gonna go anywhere. And then they go on to, go to east and then they go, I'm gonna go, you know, around the world. It's just, it is amazing because I think everybody should travel, if, you know, any opportunity to travel and actually live and breathe a different culture is, is huge for kids.
Yeah, if I can leave you with one thing, I would just really encourage you to read the kids' reflections when that newsletter comes out. Because they're pretty, they're pretty intense. Thank you for your time.
Okay. That was over seven minutes. We were generous. I turned off my timer. Moving right along. Skipping the, Frank, I guess where do you?
Okay, very well. It'll be a very brief report. I do want to give, uh, yes, uh, give you a, just a... A general outlook of fiscal year-end twelve. Last meeting, I gave a pretty, pretty thorough report about that. And because we are so close to the fiscal year-end, I'm, I'm not gonna hand out another financial report. But just to say that, uh, we do expect the expenditures to be favorable against the six million dollar budget, six million three twenty-six. I mentioned that we had a lot of pluses and minuses on the revenues. They don't actually settle until September. That's when the state collects all of our data, looks at their appropriation, determines whether or not they can fully fund. Things such as the largest category of funding that we wait for is special education. As you know, we spend over a million dollars generally on that and that's a significant piece of the financial picture. So, um, uh, the one thing I, I would like to ask, and you don't need a motion, but if you want a motion, you can do a motion. So I guess it's more of making you aware that, as we have in previous years, if there is a bit of a surplus, as we are making the final transactions and closing the books, I would like to transfer any general fund surplus into our capital reserve. We have a couple of significant projects that, that are not clearly defined. The biggest one is, is you look around the building, you see these columns that are resting. And we have had an engineer take a look at it, give us this assessment of what, what may be causing it. We, we need a much more comprehensive report on that. And I, I think that we should have a reserve for that project. So, and, and it's not just that project, but there, that's, that's a primary one. So that, that would, I guess I would say that would be my intent, come in pretty close to the six million three twenty-six. If there is a variance between actual spending and that budget amount, I would transfer, you know, as much as we could into the capital reserve. I don't think it would be a very significant amount, like... Uh, any questions?
You want a motion to authorize that a certain amount, Tom, Frank, or you want to just...
I would say if the board is comfortable with me just proceeding as, as I described, that's fine.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that's what we've done in the past.
We have, yeah. Okay. That's good. Any, any other questions? Okay, that's my report.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Okay. Old business. I guess we can update you on the Red Committee meeting. Bruce, you want to do it? You won't need to do it.
We can start.
Go ahead, start. The Red, the Red Committee met last week, Wednesday. There are draft articles of agreement ready to, ready for submission to the State Board of Education, which is sort of the next step. Rather than, than call these sort of a final draft, the, the committee has taken these, made some changes, comments, and then invited the five constituent boards, as well as the Lewin and Gray Board, to the meeting on July twenty-fifth to get comments, input, you know, questions, anything, before we would get something that we would most likely then take to the next step. Submit it to the Vermont Department of Education and then move forward with, you know, sort of the public engagement piece of the Red, going out to the five towns and, and saying, okay, these are the reasons why it makes sense to do this. This is the plan. This is how it's gonna work. There is pretty general support across the members of the Red Committee that, you know, that, that this is a worthwhile endeavor to keep moving forward with this and to, to get these articles ready, to submit it, to, to move forward. I think, I think generally to the, to the end of it, to see if the towns are actually in favor of it, would be my personal opinion.
I think one of the, I guess he's moved it to the first article. Is this business of building a new school for Jamaica, Wyndham, and Townsend. And I think that seems to be the tilt, the point, that has tilted the people who were concerned. They're in favor of what's going on at this point because it looks like it's going to save some money overall. And it had a lot of benefits to it with the new school. So that is now right in the articles. It was sort of an addendum before. The other thing, there's a roadmap or a timeframe that we've put out. And all three of these, there's the articles, the draft articles, there's the roadmap for this timeframe thing. And there's a warning to the, to the state, I guess it's to the state.
No, it'll be to the town.
It's just a short piece. And I dug around and found those on wyndhamcentralboard.org, under Red Committee, and then under Resources. So that the draft that we saw last, last week is what's still on the internet right now. It's got, got to be a revised version that comes out. But if you want to see where we are with it right as of last week, these three documents are dated June fifth. They're mixed in with a whole bunch of other stuff. I don't know.
It goes alphabetical, that's the problem. I mean, I think it doesn't have title.
You gotta look for the June fifth date.
You know, you could always email one of, you could always email one of us because we get them emailed to us. And I could just forward you the email from John Everett, the SBA consultant who works with the Red Committee, so you could get them. It, it would be good to read those three documents. Certainly the articles before the July twenty-fifth meeting.
Could you forward that? I would like to see it.
Sure.
Sure. I just want to correct one thing. The next step would be that this committee, empowered by the boards, I mean, subsequent to this meeting on the twenty-fifth, send those articles, the final proposed form, to the State Board of Education, via the Department of Education. But the State Board of Education is the body that has to take action, based on the commissioner's recommendation, to permit the towns to go further in terms of voting on, on forming. This, this timeframe, part of, part of the crunch to make it happen is things, the committee wanted to have something happen on Election Day in November. And then have it all ready to do something else for the March Town Meeting Day. So there's a kind of a lineup of dates. This is very interesting to read through because it gives you an idea of why it's being done in this timeframe. And that's to be upfront about the engagement process with all the voters considering this issue in Wayne and Carefree.
So do you envision that by the time Town Meeting comes around, the five towns are gonna vote? Is that playing?
It's, it's possible that, that that could happen as early as November.
Oh. Five towns re-voting then?
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, one of the rationales or one of the things the committee's considered is that the vote in, in November is a time when everybody comes out. Generally, you have the highest turnout. And if you were concerned about whether you could pass something, the committee could call for a special meeting and then just the interested people would come out. But I think it's wise, in such a move, to get as large a population to consider the issue. Then the challenge is to engage that large group and knowing what's going on before they go to vote. So there are advantages and disadvantages, but that's, that's one of the thinking. And then the other thought is, we, depending on how that vote comes out, it, it may still be possible, even if there's some negative votes by certain towns, lack of approval, that it'll be clarified in the discussion as to what needs to be changed about the articles. And then you'd have an opportunity to revise that.
By Town Meeting.
By Town Meeting. And, you know, that's, that's, that's why probably, you know, if I were asked, I would advise to consider voting in November. Also, in our experience with, you know, this is not a bond vote. That would be something that would have to come later in terms of if the school was built, planning and so forth. I mean, the Red Committee has to, I mean, the Red K through twelve school district has to, New York Education District has to be formed first before there can be any, you know, official action regarding construct, you know, construction plans or a building committee. And so that's, that's, that's subsequent. But I do know that the committee feels very strongly that unless there is a commitment to planning such a project, there is not really the advantage in terms of student learning and opportunity and sustaining student program over the long term financially. That without that, changing all these boards into one board doesn't give anybody that much reason to say yes. That's, that's why, that's why Bruce is emphasizing that first article regarding this proposal from, uh, from the three boards to commit to planning. from, uh, from the three boards to, uh, commit to planning for building a building. They can't promise a bond, they can't promise anything, but that's the, that's the, the benefit for students, that's the primary benefit. I do, I wanna thank the members of this board for stepping forward to be appointed by their school districts and thereby guaranteeing us a liaison here with, you know, with the Leavon and Gray board. And certainly this has been going for, uh-
Since last August.
The timeline, yeah, back to last August.
Coming on a year.
Yeah. So, been a number of meetings and it was going pretty slow.
It has picked up.
Yeah, this is the time to pick it up. I mean, you know, let people know and, and look yourself, uh-
So that June 25th meeting, it's just members of boards?
It's July 25th.
I'm sorry, July, I'm gonna be-
Uh, well, it's a public meeting. All the meetings are public. It's a publicly worn meeting, yeah.
Anybody can. So that might be a good time to really advertise it, to get the public out, don't you think?
Actually-
No?
Well, it depends. It, it depends. The, the issue there is that they can get really bogged down if they're not informed about the articles. I mean, the purpose of this, I think, if I'm wrong, but the study committee wants to make sure that all of the boards that they're representing know and have considered and are, are the most knowledgeable about the articles and what the political implications are and what the commitment is and the pros and cons. Because after that discussion, then the committee and, uh, the steps forward in terms of informing and defining the pros and cons of the issues will become clearer. Now, it's a public meeting, so people are welcome to come, but this is not the time to be debating about the merits of necessarily the whole program. It's really trying to get clear about these articles, whether they're worth pursuing or not, whether they need to be edited, or whether lies or there's something missing.
Yeah, we talked about that in the committee, actually. It's like, let's get all the boards in the same place.
You're not ready.
And then the next meeting would be the one where we really bring the public in. Because now we've got-
You're clear.
We're clear. You know, and everybody has the same story.
On the same page.
Exactly.
Did we get any sense of when John was gonna send out the updated version of all that?
He, no. But he generally, you know, a week or so before.
Was he getting back to us sometime, did he say, you know?
He didn't give us time back.
Usually he's about a week or so before the meeting. And he posted, it goes immediately to the, to the website, but as soon as I get it, I have a note that I'll send it to the whole board.
Yeah, I think in this case we should get it to, and I can, you check with me and make sure Frank, you know, send it out to all the board members of the five boards plus Leavon and Gray. You know, when he gets, uh, revised, right, based on your revisions from the last meeting.
Right, yeah. There weren't a lot, but there were a few significant ones.
Yeah. And there's one thing that was on, uh, left to be determined, I think, too, wasn't there?
Yeah, the, uh, the issue about some towns come to the table with a building and some not and what-
Right.
How does that resolve the equity issue? Okay. All right. Um, proposal for the future graduation requirements in science.
No, we have this up for discussion.
All right, is that, you wanna talk about that tonight?
Uh, we can. I don't have any additional information to share other than I am strongly in favor of uh, making this happen for incoming ninth graders, to encourage them to take, because we plan to make the earth science course a requirement as part of that and then, of course, encourage them to continue on with other sciences because of their eight semesters of high school, it was just the three credits, they're gonna take the three required credits. And it's, it's only three, and it's three out of eight. So presently it's the introduction to astronomy, chemistry and physics and biology and then this will become, um, earth science. So as the third, as, as a third required course, but then the need for the fourth course as well to-
And the fourth one is-
Is, it would be a point of their choice at any point of their high school career.
And the primary rationale is for the board for the required sequences to make sure that students have the instructions to be able to, uh, perform adequately, knowledgeably on the, uh, standards of student expectation for science at grade 11.
The choice of electives don't, um, guarantee that students, uh, will be taught and assessed on the state standards. So there's, I don't know, it's getting a little late and so I'm not as enthusiastic as I usually am when I'm talking about a subject, but, um, I, I feel this is a stepping in moving our school forward.
Let me ask the board, do you think it's ready to go to an action or decision step pending further discussion at the next board meeting?
Yes, I'm sure.
Does, would the addition of that requirement make him, make it more difficult to fit in some of the AP stuff? I mean, we just saw the AP biology class and I was impressed, you know? But those kids are mostly juniors, you know? So now if we've added a science requirement junior year, would that delay them getting into AP biology for another, because of the scheduling dilemma? Will that push that to their senior year? Will make it, will it make it harder for them to say, do that kind of-
Will actually allow students to more easily move into the AP courses because at this time you have to take chemistry or physics before you can move on to AP chemistry or physics. And with the completion of the earth science, they can move on to either of those or both right afterward.
So they could take the AP instead of the standard?
So instead of being plus-
No, 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 they would take, after they would finish earth science, which can be, which can actually take place in their sophomore year, it doesn't have to be in the junior year. So if they sequence it, uh, with that, um, long-term goal in mind, uh, then they, they can take, like, it's, I mean, it's possible to do the three required courses in two years because they're semester length and then in your junior year, take AP bio, AP chemistry, and no one's gonna take, I don't think anyone's gonna take a third AP science course, but they can in their senior year. So it actually opens more doors.
Okay. Well, it's providing a foundation for them to move forward on those.
Lester, that was a clarification, so would they have to take chemistry to take AP chemistry?
No.
No.
No, because the earth science course, that's right, between the, the-
Between the three courses.
Between the three courses, they can go right into AP chemistry or AP physics or AP biology.
That's really right.
Right, in the senior year.
Okay.
So it would actually-
Or junior.
Yeah, or junior year, exactly.
All right.
Exactly. And the doubling up, um, this year among a number of students, I, there is a, like I have a freshman, the department has allowed that there's, so like, we have a number of freshmen right now taking chemistry already because they finished the ICAP course in the fall semester. So they're being encouraged to take more sciences earlier in their career. But the notion of having, um, the required, uh, increasing the science requirements is that all students will do it, not just those who are inclined for, you know, you know, aspirational reasons, parental reasons.
And all students will be prepared.
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
Yep. Make sure you consider Bowman's letter and, you know, that'll inform discussion we'll have at the next meeting prior to making the decision. Okay? I mean, we'll have obviously more discussion and call for a decision by the board. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? No? New business? We've, uh, already done Journey East and AP Biology, so it's just down to the teacher recommendations.
Yes, I have a recommendation to appoint two people. Mary Davis, I think I spoke to her in a report, her hire. And you have a resume that-
Yeah, don't we keep on passing this?
Tom Walters, he was, uh, he'll come back. Uh, and Tom Walters will be the .67 FD two-thirds, uh, music, uh, replacing, uh, Mr., yeah, Robert Zimmerman, not Timmerman, Zimmerman.
He's post one year.
Uh, well, uh, yes. Now, the, this one, uh, the part-time could be a continuing one. The, uh, the, the other is based on filling a one-year leave of absence, so that really is offered as a one-year contract, uh, depending on whether the faculty member decides to return or not, it might continue if that is, uh, yes, that's the case. So that's my recommendation and, uh, questions? We'd be very fortunate to have these people, uh, actually, uh, Mr. Walters is coming back who's a music, uh, has decided not to be working for the Vermont Education Association and wants to get back into teaching and has, as you can see from the resume, quite a strong background in, uh, developing programs, uh, Mount Hensfield, very fine reputation, so we're very fortunate to have him. And I have actually, as you can, um, inform on the microphone. I'm, I'm very, very confident in both candidates.
Mike, any suggestions, one motion or two?
Uh, you can, you want?
Uh, yes, you have to, you have to vote yes or no. Your role is to, uh, consider the superintendent's recommendation for anybody who's licensed and say yes or no. If you don't, if you're not satisfied, tell me to look again.
Approved. Superintendent's recommendation for these two in the heart.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Aye. All those in favor of, uh, approving the superintendent's appointments for Mary Davis and Tom Walters, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bills and pay orders.
Consent agenda.
Still working on those?
Okay, it's consent agenda.
All right, before we, Jim, pull that back. Just, nobody wanted to move to take anything out of the consent agenda, right?
Right.
All right. Doesn't need a second?
May, you mean Mike made the motion?
Mike made the motion. It is, it is agreed. Um, so it's bills and pay orders, yeah? Um, and we do need the executive session, right?
Yeah, it'll be brief. Uh, I guess you could do bills and payrolls afterward if you had any other things.
Um, you know, there's the next meeting reminders, obviously. July 10th is us, July 25th is the RED, and then all the WCSU and VSB. Do you still have review to do or are you just signing?
Please check.
Okay.
I'm noting our review today is six, twelve. So we can go to executive session, whatever.
All right. Do you wanna do executive session quick?
A little off the hook.
Uh, we hope in the neighborhood of five minutes.
So I'll just wait, and, cause I need that paper to get the bills and pay orders.
Hopefully they're gonna sign it.
Yeah, we'll, uh, all right. There we hope.
Thanks.
Okay, somebody want to move to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session.
For personnel.
For personnel. Oh, okay, we're back. All right, are bills and pay orders done yet?
No, they're still working on bills and pay.
Looking for one more.
All right, while you're, uh, working on that, Joe, I wanted to mention that, uh, just acknowledge, uh, Paul jurors directed a nice, uh, donation to Leavon and Gray through his employer, Entergy, uh, on behalf of a $500 grant to fund our project graduation. So we're very appreciative of, of that. Goes, goes a long way to support that program.
I'm just proud of Entergy and the ability to do that, so it's been one of our good causes.
Yep.
Glad, glad we were doing that.
Thank you, Paul.
And to Entergy.
Make sure we got that.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Wow. So we have, we have a lot. We have warrant, warrant number 67 dated May 11th for $1,496.95. Warrant 68 from May 18th dated 48 thou, uh, dated in the amount of $48,616.35. May 22nd, warrant number 69 for $2,237.2. Also from May 22nd, warrant number 70 for $14,189.50. From June 1st, warrant 71 for $41,371.63. From June 4th, warrant 72 for $1,040.40. From June 6th, warrant 73 for $16,143.79. And from June 12th, warrant 74 for $30,047.77. We also have payrolls from May 11th in the amount of $8,645. May 18th, $116,216.45. Also from May 18th, $2,244. From June 1st, we have $9,645. $12,546.50. And $115,930.88. And last, from June 4th, $2,865. Totalling $423,248.24.
That's a big one.
Yeah. They've all been reviewed, checked? That's all good?
Good.
One that took so long.
One.
Wants to approve.
Thank you. Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the warrants and payrolls as read. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. All right, motion carries. I do believe that's it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Being counted by five minutes.
And we had a lot of presentations. All right.